Good evening, welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board, meeting for August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. President this evening, Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, Steve Latrova, Member, Richard Clark, Member, David Durgan, Member, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess up your name. Can you say it for me?
Jasefa.
Jasefa, okay. As our Acting Town Planner, and myself, Kai Horn, Chairman. First order of business tonight is to notify everyone that the meeting is being recorded, and our second thing on the agenda would be Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay. Under new business, reorganization of the Board and appointment of Central Mass Regional Planning Delegate, if we have a full quorum, and we do, and I apologize for my absence on the last meeting. So, would somebody like to make a motion for the reorganization?
Mr. Chairman, we have three members who have not served as Chairman, and I think it would be kinda cool to see one of them step up, take a little bit of leadership role, and so we're looking for a volunteer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be inclined to go volunteer, Mr. Durgan.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to deny that one.
Oh, you didn't even wait for me to second it.
I know.
Wow.
You sure? Yeah, I'm sure.
Steve, Richard? Nothing, Mr. Horn hasn't done an excellent job, but just some experience.
Oh, Mr. Horn has done an excellent job.
Experience, why doesn't it be nice to have someone else up here, maybe? I just, this is my thought.
I was gonna nominate you, but...
Well, I've been two or three times already, so I had the experience.
I've had the honor of being Vice Chair.
You ran a meeting or two?
Wanted to, yeah.
So, I think you're the most qualified of the three of us to be Chair.
Well, I think...
I nominate Richard Clark as Chair.
In this hall, I think we need a new recruit, if you will, a new, uh, new voice.
Well, David already said no. So, are you looking for, guy, you really, how do you feel? Do you wanna take it?
I would like somebody else to take it.
You would like somebody else to take it?
Yeah, I've got a lot going on with work and family right now, so if somebody else could take it, that would be great.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would accept the role of Chair, um...
Second.
The only, the only, the only thing I would request is maybe we could table the vote on this to, to further down in the meeting, 'cause I already have to recuse myself 'cause of this A and R.
Well, we could, we could, I could finish this meeting if you want, and you could take it for the next meeting.
That'd be perfect.
Okay?
That'd be perfect.
If that's agreeable to everybody.
Yes, works for me.
All right.
So, we have a motion and a second, I think? I can motion, Richard.
We have a second.
I have a second.
All in favor of Mr. Latrova becoming the new Chairman at the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Are you unanimous?
Nay.
Congratulations.
And now we have to pick a Vice Chairman.
Nominate Richard Clark.
I'll second.
We have a nomination and a second from Mr. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Who made, who made the motion? That was very quick.
I nominated Richard.
Okay.
Dan seconded.
And Dan seconded.
The last would be the clerk to the Board.
Mr. Chair?
May Mr. Durgan?
I'll accept the clerk.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, I was just curious, why do, why do we still continue to have, 'cause I've been the clerk several times, and it's never come up that I've ever had anything to do.
Well, if the Chairman and the Vice Chairman would not happen to make a meeting, the clerk would run it.
If the Chairman and the Vice Chairman don't make a meeting, we probably don't have a quorum.
You could, you could still have a quorum with three people.
No, that's true.
Okay.
All right, so, did somebody already second, David?
Second.
All right.
Okay.
Who made the?
Who made the motion for Mr. Durgan to be clerk?
I think, I think I did.
Oh, okay. So, then I will, I will second.
Or is the leak of you?
(laughing).
All right.
That's reasonable.
Motion, second, Mr. Latrova.
Okay.
For Mr. Durgan to be the clerk, yeah.
Yeah, Durgan to be Secretary.
Yeah.
Richard made the motion.
Okay.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
Okay.
That's what happens when we put this off for months. Sorry.
Um, the last delegate, the last appointment we need is a delegate for Central Mass Regional Planning.
I will be happily to nominate Mr. Clark, as we're doing an excellent job now for the past couple years.
Yeah, if he's still, if he, if he still has the time to do it, I would agree. He knows the people there and...
I've enjoyed that association, so I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, so, so I'm, uh, so, Dan?
Yeah, I got that one.
And I'm seconding it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Okay, so, Mr. Clark is gonna be our Central Mass Regional Planning Delegate again this year. Next item on, uh, agenda, approval of minutes from July tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I had read the minutes, and I wanna first of all congratulate Aura on doing an unbelievably excellent job putting all the minutes together. I know what we get for both sometimes, there's a lot of back and forth, as you just witnessed, and you do an excellent job. Thank you very much.
Yep, I would echo Mr. Edgerton's comments. You made us sound better than we really are. Thank you very much.
I put a lot of work in, and I want an old document.
And I noticed it was five pages long, so that was, that was a long meeting.
Cutting it down.
Two sides, though. We're economizing.
Well, I can make a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting, as presented?
July tenth, okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Edmiston, and a second from Mr. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, because I was not at that meeting, so if you guys wouldn't mind signing off these two copies. I'm gonna give them to you at the end, Mr. Clark, and then you can have the folder and everything.
Okay.
Okay, so that's out of the way. Item number three on the agenda, A and R plans, Lot number five, Sophie's Way.
I have the site plans here, if anybody wants to take a look.
Um, if you could just pass out like two of them, we can share.
Absolutely.
Did anybody else have the issue that we could, I didn't have that as an attachment?
I didn't get that either.
This wasn't, there isn't an attachment.
Okay. Durgan, if you wanna pass it over?
Do you guys want one?
Yeah, we can probably share it.
Have anybody got one?
I didn't want to give it to you.
I think all the same.
We got enough, I don't know, we're moving.
Yeah.
We have an engineer looking at this plan?
Okay, yes, we, excuse me, someone?
Steven, you there?
I'm Mr. Steven Presat, and we're talking today, and we're the ones who prepared this plan. Um, the issue we got going here is we had a foundation put in on Lot number five, off of Sophie Way, and it ended up too close to the property line, so what we've done is, um, we've made an agreement with Mr. Latrova to revise that line, and that's simply what we're doing here, so that the foundation will now conform to zoning.
So, this is, um, parcel B, six hundred and sixty square feet, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, we're taking a small piece out of the larger piece to add to Lot five R at the end of Sophie's Way.
Five R.
This is five R.
Five R. Oh, yeah.
And that, and that piece that you're talking about, that you're taking out of Lot six R, is the six hundred and sixty square foot parcel B that's shown on the, on the map?
That is correct, and we're giving back parcel A.
Oh, okay. Parcel A is up here.
Yeah, we're not still in control of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Doesn't this road need to be in before an A and R plan can be approved?
Sorry, what was that, please?
Doesn't this road need to be in before an A and R plan can be approved, this road?
No, it just needs to be approved on a definitive subdivision to be able to revise off it. We're not changing the road.
Yeah, there is no road yet.
But we already...
It's subdivision.
Right, but the, we already gave lot releases on all the lots, and the foundation is already there, so it's just to make it, they're just trying to take a nonconformance and make it a conformance. So, the six hundred and sixty, sixty square feet being added here, and...
For A and R plans, you need to have an access road. There's no access road right now.
But to raise, there is an approved road from a definitive subdivision plan that is...
It's filed with the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
So, on our, on our checklist, uh, Steven, I was looking at that, um, there is, am I in the right one here? Yes, it looks like there's two of them. So, we have a total of, yeah, there's a total of eighteen checks on the checklist, and there's only one, two, three, four that are requesting a waiver, and, but the other ones are not checked, so I, I mean, am I to assume that you, you're complying with the other ones that are not checked, or, do you know what the situation is with that?
I apologize, I do not, I did not fill out the checklist, nor do we even have a copy of it.
Who might have filled that out, may I ask, Mr. Chairman? Who's the chair? It's, in the past, we've actually had some of them that are indicating N A, as I recall, but it's, uh, it's a bit out of the ordinary that out of...
Was it the owner?
Eighteen items, there was only four checks, and the less the, fourteen of them are just blank, like they have never been given consideration or even read.
I can't, I'm unsure. I'm assuming Mr. Smith filled it out, but I could not attest to that, and he is out of town at the moment.
Okay. You signed improperly executed form A's on one checklist. Subdivision of fees, hundred dollars per lot affected. So, was there a check submitted for two hundred dollars for this?
Yes, yes.
There was, okay.
So...
These are waivers, yeah, so I'm just going through the checklist to see if we have everything that we need.
Are we gonna go through that checklist now, Mr. Chairman?
Well, it's...
I would thought that was the applicant's responsibility.
It's not checked, so what do we...
I know it's not checked, but again, I submit that it's the applicant's responsibility to provide us with a document that's complete, as opposed to our going through and without knowledge, in terms of what their intent might be, making assumptions.
Okay.
What's the Board's pleasure? I don't think it's acceptable at this point, without this, you know, clarification. I mean, we can make assumptions in terms of what we think that they want, or what we think the answer would be, but who are we to do that? We're not empowered to do that, I don't believe.
So...
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have my glasses with me right now, unfortunately, so I'm not gonna be very good at reading this, but I would, uh, I would suggest that if, if the items that are not checked, if they're more or less obvious, if those are items that we can go through, I think it would be just in, just be a courtesy to the applicant and just to, to our, our responsibility in general, to kinda look at those. If there's anything that's in question that might be a little more difficult, I think Mr. Clark is right, we should not be making assumptions.
I do think we're, uh, not only making assumptions, but setting a precedent here. I mean, who's to say the next applicant doesn't come in and say, hey, I'm only gonna check three? That guy got away with four, and then the one after that, let's up check two, or then eventually we're down to none, and what is the form? What's the value of the form at that point? Form is consolidated to gather information, and this one is sorely lacking as far as my reading of it is concerned.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, but then, in theory, this shouldn't be coming before, this should not have been accepted.
Right.
This is unacceptable, but it is on the agenda, it's in front of us now, and that's the only reason why I'm saying, let's at least take a look at it and see what's, if there's anything there that we can be helpful with.
That jumps out at us. So, number one, the two signed original and property, improperly executed form A's on one checklist, we have that in our binders. Aura says that there's a check for, for, for two hundred dollars, there's a check. Uh, plans should be submitted at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, it is. Property taxes paid. Do we have any?
So, that would be an important one, to your point.
Do we have any, any...
I have no record of that, and I don't think anyone here has.
Correct.
So, that's a showstopper right there.
Agreed. So, if there's nothing in here that we can, that tells us right now that, hey, taxes have been paid, then we, we should stop this right now and table it.
So, I, I guess we would ask the applicant if they would be willing to withdraw their, um, their plan without prejudice and resubmit it at the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting?
With the hope that it is completed by that meeting.
Right, with everything on the checklist completed.
Bill always accepted these, and this was left with me on my desk, and I had no idea how to direct this, man. What's the word, is it, take the plans and wait for somebody to take it from there?
I mean, there's gonna be some growing pains without a planner, so we'll have to get used to it. All right, so, Steven, do you think that would be all right to withdraw this plan and then resubmit it with a properly filled out checklist to us?
I, I don't believe I have a choice. Um, I would ask that we withdraw without prejudice, and we resubmit it at the next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'll take care of that one. Next item on our agenda for this evening, um, minor site plan review, Eight Village Street, Salinas Property LLC, conversion of a four-unit dwelling into a seven-unit dwelling. Is there somebody up here? Okay.
Yep.
Because this was a, because this was a minor site plan review, we didn't have to advertise it in the newspaper or anything like that?
Yeah, we didn't have to advertise it in the newspaper, 'cause according to the bylaws for Dudley, I believe that a minor site review is under eight units.
Yeah.
So, it's seventy...
Minor site plan review is under what?
Eight units, it's four to eight units. So, since it's under the eight units, it it's okay to have a minor site plan review.
It didn't have to be advertised for two weeks or anything?
Yes, it does not have to be...
It's a minor site plan review with major issues.
Are we done with this?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
How's it going?
So, do we have, um, do we have new plans for this, or?
Um, yes, so if we go under, um, yes, if we go under new business, sorry, um, Mr. Salinas ended up sending us what the engineer ended up saying, um, with, I believe, the provisions that was addressed, and the snow removal, the trash removal, and the lighting. All of that is included. And then we, oh, sorry, we also have, um, the building inspector, which ended up having a letter, as well as email trails of me reaching out to the other departments, and...
Uh, we sent a letter of equal search?
Yes, he ended up resending that over.
Do we still have the letter from Walsh, uh, Jeff, Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering?
Yeah.
This thing should be there.
You see him on the back?
On the back side.
Oh, okay. There you go, okay. It was twenty-three, twenty-nine, thirty-one comments, okay. Okay, so, I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and this was thoroughly discussed, but I did watch the video online. Um, there was quite an extensive list of issues that our town engineer presented. Um, I'm looking at the copy here, and it comes up thirty-one, thirty-one comments. Has your engineer been able to address all of these comments?
Uh, well, as soon as I left our meeting, I contacted the architect and also the engineer, a Berlin engineer, and he seems to think that doesn't apply, uh, to this building. Uh, and then he's, he provided a copy of your Dudley field card, uh, labeling this building four to eight units already, um, and...
That's just the, uh, classification, right. It's single, single house, uh, two units, three units, and then four to eight, and then nine plus. So, anything that has, anything more than four and less than, than nine would be four to eight.
He's, he's seen it as listed as, listed as four to eight units.
Well, that's how it's, that's how we, we, um, I don't know what the word is, that's how we label it, classify it.
It's only classification. It has nothing to do with what the actual building has in it, it's what can potentially be there.
Anything that has four, or like, yeah, five units, you know, it's gonna be in that four to eight units.
So, there was only a classification on the field card?
Yeah, it's just a field, that's just, you know, for, for assessing, assessing purposes.
Okay, so, he, he pointed that out, um, as far as the, the, the other list of stuff, um, the parking situation, um, I provided a lighting plan, uh, snow area, and a dumpster, um, area.
So, on this, on the, on the assessor's card, Mr. Chairman, on the back, where it says, "Style description, four to eight family," two lines below that, or three lines below that, it says occupancy, and the count is four. So, this is the assessor's card that was attached to the letter from the engine, from his engineer, who moved to that property, and again, right below where he's reading, "Style, four to eight families," it says occupancy, four. See it, David?
Right now, both. Right there, occupancy.
Anybody showing?
Don't, who was that?
See it?
Right here.
Yes, it's the occupancy, it's a question to one family.
This right here, Steve?
Thank you.
Yeah, on the, uh, back one page.
Thank you.
Picture of the house.
Okay.
Here, I'll give you money, 'cause I'm going.
Question?
On the back, right there, you know, see right up here, it says, "Style forty-eight family."
Yep.
If you look a few lines down, you see it says occupancy?
Yeah.
Four.
That's just right before stories.
Question, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Latrova. So, then, Mr. Latrova, it's your understanding that occupancy is the controlling number, right?
It's my understanding that as far as the town assessor is concerned, that is a four-family dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no one seems to know what it was.
I do.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know what it was. Uh, the five meters, no one seems to know what it was. I asked the neighbors, uh, as far as what, what did they did for trash. Uh, they seem to, it seems to the, where the trash is right now, it was, uh, the Manzoni's own the bi, the building behind as well, three units, and, uh, they also owned this building at one time, for a long time, and they seemed to put a, a dumpster in, uh, in the, in the front parking spot, what I proposed to put that same, in the same, in the same spot, but no one seemed to give me a straight answer of what it was. If it was a five, it was a four, um, so, that's still a question mark, at, at least my eyes.
Legally, it was a four.
Legally, it was a four.
Yeah, that, that basement one was an illegal part.
Yeah.
That would make five, I assume. I know the assessors don't know about that, so we're going by that four occupancy, then it's, it's the, whatever four units there were.
If you look at the same field card, it says there's only four bathrooms, so that would kinda make sense that it was four, it was a four apartments.
Mr. You're sharing them.
Yeah, so if there was a fifth apartment there, it was an illegal apartment that the assessors were not aware of.
Yeah, but isn't the issue in front of us if we're, we're trying to discuss, not what it was, but if it can be the eight unit, correct?
The seven, seven, seven.
Seven, if it can be a seven, so I, I just...
Right.
Where a starting point is, I don't know if that matters quite personally, I just think...
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, at the last meeting, you talked about, one of the first things that Mr. Clark and I both agreed on was we were, we couldn't understand the situation of how there could be completely renovated seven units in that building with no permits pulled, and Mr. Salinas, at that meeting, he, he stated more than once that he had done none of that work.
Right.
That he had bought that property that way. Since that meeting, new information has come to light, uh, where I feel very strongly that that's not true at all, that the work had been done, in fact, after you purchased the property, and, starting with, I believe, or, this is in the binder, too, the stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, if you go towards the end, we're gonna pull up, we're gonna start with this, Dan, right here?
This one here, the one that I have up?
That's the one, yeah, the one that Jasefa has up right now. Generally, what you're looking at is, you're looking at the listing for this property when it was on the market by the New Hampshire company that Mr. Salinas bought the property from last July. The Manzoni family sold the property to this company in July for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Several days later, Mr. Salinas bought the property from that same company for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the problem is, in the meantime, what happened was, the company in New Hampshire had an option to purchase the property, a hundred and fifty thousand, they hadn't executed, and they, in the meantime, were marketing it actively. So, I found their website, and I found this on their website, it's actually still up now, and it's a sole property that they handled, and the description of the property is pretty clear. Says, "Tremendous potential awaits, the soon-to-be six-unit building, offered at greater than forty percent less than, below its ARV, which is, uh, after renovation value. Just off Main Street and Dudley, finish what the seller started, converting this four-unit property into six one-bedroom, one-bathrooms, a rare and highly sought-after layout for the area. The building is zoned for four to eight units, is one-third occupied, and is one-third gutted, so that you can begin work on day one. This property features off-street parking, yada, 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 has all the things. Highlights, uh, conversion from four to six-bedroom, one-bath units already started, two are fully gutted. Two units are currently occupied," goes on, repeats the zoning, off-street, yada, yada, yada. Jasefa, if you could scroll down, so we can see the photographs that accompany it. Now, these are the photographs of the building. You can see the top-left one is definitely the front of the building, that's definitely Eight Village Way, the next two photos are also Eight Village Way. That fourth photo on the right, that's the conditions when it was occupied prior to him buying it last July. There was no pavement there. Those vehicles are parked in front of the building, they're literally in where he's got, you, where he's showing where he wants to put a couple of parking spaces, but they're not, it's not paved like it is now. So, you can see it's unpaved. If you go down to the next row, that first photo on the left, I believe is an error made by the people who were listing the property, 'cause that building doesn't exist anymore, you can't see that building from anywhere, uh, when you're at the property. But the next two photos are photos of what the building looked like when he bought it, gutted. Those are the two gutted units, and that's one of the finished units that was still occupied. And that's one of the finished units that was still occupied, you can see the TV set's actually in the picture. So this is how they marketed it, and they listed it to 360, 352,500, and as we all know from the record, Mr. Salinas paid $250,000 for it. And also, after that picture, this photograph right here, that you gentlemen have in your binder, I went to the property, this is the pressure-treated lumber that's used to make the decks and the staircases on the back of the building for the egress to those new apartments, and if you take note of the date code on the lumber, it's clearly stamped 23/9/07. That's the date this lumber was made.
Oh, is it this one, sorry?
There you go.
Sorry?
So that is a date code off of the lumber, so you can't, you can't have a situation where the previous owner built all that, when that lumber didn't exist at the time that he would've built it. You follow me?
That was 17 years ago, '07.
No, it's 2023.
Year first.
It's year first.
Okay, let me see it.
I actually asked one of the contractors I know, and he said that this is actually July 9, 2023, but even if you wanted to say it was September 7, 23, it doesn't matter because either way, that's lumber that didn't exist, if that was built prior to you owning it.
September 23, 2007.
The conditions of the, of the unit, it was as described on the plans, I never saw the gutted, the building gutted, and that was what made it more attractive to me to invest on it.
Those are brand-new. I was at, earlier this evening, I attended the neighborhood meeting at the Dollar General for the renovations of the roads and everything, the sewer and everything that's going to happen down there on Mill Street. Right, which also involves his property, and the gentleman standing right next to me happened to ask a question, because he's the property that's right behind this property. He's on Mill Street, his property backs up to this property. We're standing out there in the parking lot of Dollar General, I said, "Excuse me," I said, "That's your house?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "Do you see those decks and stairs, the brand-new pressure-treated decks and stairs on the back of that building over there?" I said, "You know one about those, when?" And he said, "Yeah, a couple months ago." I also spoke to Mr. Menzoni today, the previous owner of the property, he confirmed with me that he was in the process of actually moving tenants out systematically, gutting the building with the intention of actually tearing the building down and selling it to make a parking lot for Dip and Donuts. But he was unable to get all the tenants out, because, as you know, you can't just throw a tenant out just because you decide you want to tear a building down. So he had a problem with getting tenants out, and in the meantime, I believe the situation was that the library property, the Old Town Library property became available, so they purchased that, Dip and Donuts purchased that property to alleviate the overflow parking.
Still a need for parking.
I did, I do, I do remember seeing that listing, but it's not actual pictures when I bought it. That list is not the actual pictures, and the building was vacant when I purchased, I didn't have to deal with tenants.
But was it fully renovated? I mean, come on, are you still going to tell me that this deck magically was built with lumber?
No, no, the deck, the deck, I did tell Nelson, that the deck was actually done prior from that.
This is, these are quotes from you, sir?
Yeah.
From the last meeting. This is what you said, quote, "Purchased this four-unit converted, already converted into a seven-unit, smaller units." You also said, quote, "I didn't do those, I purchased that property as-is, under those conditions," unquote. And finally, you said, quote, "We haven't done anything, like I said, we haven't done nothing. I called the building inspector, I called the electrical inspector, no one caught me doing work, I called them in."
That's the truth, I did call them, and I did.
That's the only part that's probably true, that you called them.
Can I just try me real quick?
Sure.
I think the matter before us is if we're talking about approving this as a minus-life plan review into eight units, seven units, excuse me, seven units.
You're absolutely right.
The research is great.
But we care.
But I'm not really sure how that is relevant to us.
I'll tell you exactly how it's, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you exactly how it's relevant to Mr. Edmiston, why it should be relevant to him, because at this last meeting, at one point, he even told Mr. Clark, he interrupted, they interrupted each other because there was a whole tete-a-tete about that, it's not a mea culpa, he's not asking for forgiveness because he didn't do it, that's what you said, because you were believing what he said at the time. I'm now pointing out to you, Mr. Edmiston, you should care about the fact that he lied to this entire board.
Right. I didn't lie to the entire board.
You're quoting him, he did not do the work.
I understand what I quoted, I understand that's what was said, what he.
And you had every reason to believe that, because you took him at his word, but I had a suspicion, because I could not understand how you could buy a fully renovated seven-unit apartment building in the town of Dudley for $250,000.
It was, the transaction between them, the Menzoni's, and them, it was $150,000. So that was a true transaction, you can go back to your records.
I have the date of the deeds, that the deeds were executed, both deeds were recorded on the same day, but the actual signatures on the deeds, that they were signed and dated, both these were done on the 19th, but Mr. Menzoni to unlocked Properties LLC for $150,000 on the 20th, and then you came just a few days later, so.
Well, I think what it comes down to is, your information from your engineer, Burton Engineering, has it been back to our engineer for his review?
What I, no, and the recent four, it was a little, I'm not sure, miscommunication between Bill Retirement, and it was just a miscommunication, so I'm trying to reach, I tried to reach Graves Engineering, but I haven't got back, there's no contact on his letter or anything.
So, Mr. Chairman, back, and we've got this letter from Burton Engineering that just came in today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt Mr. Butrowe, but just in reading that letter from Burton Engineering, at the bottom of the first page, it says, "Tape survey and not addressing complete design topographic survey, any of the items described in 12 through 29 by Graves Engineering." So what you provided us with, at best, is only a partial answer, and he specifically mentions some items not answered or addressed, so it's incomplete at best.
Mr. Clark? At best, second to the last paragraph in the engineer's letter to Mr. Salinas that was copied to us today, there was never any discussion with you, Mr. Salinas, addressing any of the specific items documented within the Graves report, simply the request for a tape survey that was provided by VEI for application to the town. So the engineer is now saying, "Look, guys, all I did for this gentleman was a taped survey."
Which does not address the issues raised by Graves.
And then, these three new plans that you submitted today are photocopies of the same taped survey that he brought last month, with handwritten in on one, snow area, handwritten in on the other one, dumpster, and handwritten in on the third one, outside lighting.
Did you make the changes?
I asked you, Mr. Edmiston.
I didn't make the destination, I didn't make, I mean, I didn't make the destination for them.
This kind of, a taped survey that, that, that is signed and stamped here, but then after the fact is photocopied and had just extra stuff added in. How can you accept, how can we accept this?
No, hear me out, so, but when I submitted the, when I submitted my, my application, I was not aware that we had to submit, that I had a survey, a photo, what do they call it, a photographic, photographic survey. I was just going by Mr. Nelson's letter, that he told me to present the board with some, with the plans, and I moved on with the architect, and I moved on with an engineer. I was not aware what specific survey I needed to be, so yes, did I, did I only hire Burling Engineer to give me a taped survey? That's what I was told to do.
No, you weren't, the term taped survey never came out of that meeting, and I would attest the fact that, you could go back and look at that video as much as you want, taped survey was never referred to in that meeting.
I believe what he's trying to say is that the.
I didn't know.
Building inspector told him to go get it.
No, 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 no.
Building inspector may have done that, but Graves Engineering provided this letter as of July 9.
He didn't, I've been.
He may not, well, he's not here to speak for himself, but in any event, the issues addressed or mentioned by Graves date back to July 9. You were here, and I believe you had a copy of that letter at that time.
I did.
And what you have provided us with is not a response to that letter in any way, shape, or form, is it? Now, seriously, is it?
It's not, it's not.
No, it's not, so you had an opportunity, you had the 31 issues laid out in front of you.
Right.
And now you're back here with essentially the same non-answers that you had last meeting.
Because I did, the next day, I did call my Burling Engineer, and the letter that dated July 15, he gave me this letter, saying that it's not needed.
What he gave you, if I'm reading this correctly, does not address those issues. I mean, he specifically says he doesn't do anything with 12 to 29.
Yes.
And then he says all he was asked to do was this taped survey, which doesn't address the issues that are raised by Graves. They're not resolved, they're not addressed.
So, let me just ask you, who made the changes to these taped surveys that were submitted to this board?
So they are, actually, one of the concern, a few concern.
Wait a minute, answer the question, who made the changes to these drawings that were submitted to this board? Did you make the changes?
There's little changes, there's changes?
Yes.
Yes, I made the changes.
Okay.
And they were not changes, they were just to guide them whether the snow is going to be low areas and stuff like that.
But you took, you took a plan that was already stamped by a civil engineer, and you made changes to it. You're not a civil engineer.
No, I'm not.
And you submitted it to this board.
I didn't know that was not a.
We're supposed to accept it as, it's going to work, and we don't know it's going to work because your engineer didn't go out and do this, you did it yourself.
Correct, I didn't know that was not.
That's not, that's not kosher.
I didn't, I didn't know that was not, that was not it, I didn't know that was, that was wrong. All I did is point out where the snow was going to be, the dumpsters was going to be, and the outside lighting.
Okay, I think you have, you have our, our list of requirements from Graves Engineering. It's, it's up to you to get your engineer to answer every one of those questions, and if you can't come up with an answer for those questions, you have to come back and ask for a waiver. But that's where, that's where it stands right now, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about the rest of the board, would you agree or disagree?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my only, my only position on this is the same as my position last month, I was ready to vote on this last month because I thought it was a bad idea to try and stick seven units in this, in this building, in this particular neighborhood, given its position in the traffic in that area. So I was trying to save him some time and say, "Why don't we vote on it now, because I don't think we should be doing it." And then that way, he'll know, "Okay, I need to think seriously about turning this back into a four-unit apartment complex." So I would actually ask, if we could just poll the members, how many of you guys think right now that we're ready to make a decision, tell him that he should be converting this back to a four-unit, not be trying to make seven units fine in this thing?
I do have a saying, I do own three bedrooms and four bedrooms in Worcester, and Southbridge, Webster, and those three bedrooms, if I have to convert that building back to, like he said, four units, I will have to convert it to four bedrooms, four bedrooms comes with big families, they don't come by with a couple and a few kids, they come with siblings or the partners, that's putting more traffic, three to four, that's putting three to four cars per unit, then in total, that building, that's going to be between 12 to 16 cars versus what the building is now, which is one bedroom, you're going to get single people, and you're going to get couples, that's the reality. Eighteen, three bedrooms, they go from anywhere from 18 to $2,000. Four bedrooms, I'm not sure if you looked it up, it goes from 2,000 to 2,500 bucks, to cover that rent, then multiple incomes needs to be in that household.
We already talked about due diligence, though, he couldn't, he didn't have to spend one dime on this property, he could have been not the owner and come and spoken to the building inspector about that property, and found out what was going to be involved to try and do what he's trying to do. Instead, it's a situation where he clearly did all of this, he bought it, he did all of his work, sunk all his money into it without taking any permits out, and now is coming for the mea culpa that we, Richard and I believed he was coming for last meeting.
The addressing with the traffic is going to, is going to be worse, as far as the traffic goes, and as far as, let me see what else, so I have the, the egress, I spoke to Paul, the Assistant Fire Chief, he has the plans for the fire line, for the fire line, but he also told me that not to move forward or anything as far as spending money until I get approval from the board. Advice me.
One thing I noticed on your parking lots, or your parking spaces, is they're nine by 18. There's a flood, it's supposed to be nine by 20.
That's actually in the list of efficiencies, too.
I did, I did spoke to Burling Engineer, he said, he said, actually, I did tell him, he says that the residential code is, you know, and I know the bylaws is 20.
Zoning bylaws.
Zoning bylaws is 20, but he thinks, he thinks the thing that 18 is the residential code, for whatever reason, he told me that.
Who's thinking is this?
Norm, from Burling Engineer, he told me nine feet.
Here?
Yes, nine feet.
No, 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 that's not relevant, it's what's in the bill, it's what's in the zoning bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would venture to guess that if, if he hired this engineer to actually do this full application, he would probably do a full-blown survey of that property, because right now, this is a taped survey, and I'll tell you, for instance, where it says 12 feet plus or minus between the corner of the building and that wall, I went out there, I ran the tape, it's 10 and a half feet. Now, a foot and a half might not sound like much, until you're driving a pickup truck down there with a nine-foot plow on it, trying to plow that parking lot back there. So, that's just one inconsistency, so that means, that makes me wonder whether or not that lot is even as many feet long as it says it is in this taped survey. You know, you lose three feet, and you've lost another parking space.
Have you been to the ZBA yet, because I noticed that you're not, you're not compliant with zoning right now.
No, I was told that this is the first step, and honestly, I've been, obviously, what I'm doing, Bill was trying to help me out, but he's no longer here, and maybe that's where the taped survey and the photo, and the photos, what do they call it, the photographic survey comes in place, I didn't know what I was doing, so I called Burling Engineer to give me something of the existing dimensions.
So, Mr. Salinas, just getting back to those photos, looking up there, because you're saying those photos are wrong, so you're saying that none of those apartments were gutted like that when you bought that property?
None of those apartments was gutted like that, when I bought those apartments.
Really? And when I spoke to the former owner of the building today, and he told me that he had gutted those apartments.
In between, it was the seller in between.
He's lying, too.
No, I'm not saying that.
In between, you're saying that for the five days that that property, that company unlocked Properties LLC, New Hampshire, the five days that they owned it, they renovated those gutted apartments, and they put on decks and stairs, with lumber, by the way, that hadn't been born yet.
Not the decks, not the decks, but what I can tell.
Now you're admitting that you built those decks.
No, no, what I'm trying to tell you, that those conditions were, when I bought them, that's what the conditions that I bought it at.
I think everybody else here can see the point that I've made several times, even though you continue to stick to your original story, so.
It's the board's pleasure, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, there was one last thing, I was just curious if any of these people in the audience are actually here for this issue, if any of them have anything.
Would anybody like to speak?
My only concern was.
Would you, we need you to come forward.
Please come in the front, thank you.
Yeah, we need you to come forward and sign in, please.
Okay, my only, I own the Dip and Donuts on the corner, so my only concern, as everybody knows with parking, is the amount of cars, we already have trouble, we bought the library, you know that, across the street for employee parking, overflow of customer parking, so my concern is only that, extra cars, people from other areas, college kids that park in the library parking lot, so that, my concern is just traffic and parking, that's all, so I don't know how many cars they're going to generate, but I hate to be person towing cars, but it would have to get to that point, so that's, I don't have an issue, nobody's been there for a while, so I don't have an issue with anything that's going on there, that's not my business, it's the overflow of traffic and cars.
You know, if your customers park at his house right now, and he's been parking that little driveway?
At his house?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, in the library, but we have college kids that rent places on the street that park in the library parking lot, and now I anticipate horrible, but possibly more, and I don't want to be a bad neighbor and tow people, but that's, I would have to have strict guidelines of nobody parking in my lot or the library lot.
Certainly, there'd be some need for signage, I would suspect at the minimum, and I also suspect that, given the congestion. And I also suspect that, uh, given the congestion that is there, especially on the weekend mornings, that if someone saw an empty spot adjacent to this building, they would have no qualms about jumping into that as fast as they could in hopes that they could be through your shop in 20 minutes or less.
Right, right.
Uh, so it's, likelihood of this being a free-for-all on numerous occasions is, is not, not to be disregarded. And as, as you've mentioned, I think everybody is aware, the congestion there on those, especially weekend mornings, is crazy. I see people parking on the sidewalk, uh, anything that looks like it's-
And there are no parking signs everywhere.
Yeah, I know, I mean, but there's a sign and there's the reality.
Right, right.
And people are just looking for anything that look like a space in hopes, again, that they can make your, their transition-
No, I understand, I know, I know.
And sometimes they can and sometimes they can't because of the order that they've placed. So, it's, it's crazy. It really is. You certainly witnessed to that more better than I have.
I know, I understand. And I mean, I'm thankful we're busy. I can't help the people all the time, how they, how they come and go, but we try and do-
No, it's, I guess, in a way, it's a measure of your success. Business is, is done very well, knock on, this is plastic, but knock on wood, yes, business has been very successful.
Yeah.
And one of the problems that we have to deal with, and I think we're trying to address, is how much more can this area handle? Now, it's a proverbial two-pound bag and five pounds of you-know-what.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, I don't have any other concerns. I would just want you to address him and just, you know, as far as cars, that we will be really strict about parking, so, but that's all.
I could be facetious and ask if anybody was, while they were building these decks, if anybody was buying donuts and who they might have been. But we won't go there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, those, those, um, I mean, that, to build that building, it must have been a crew. You cannot use a moonlight on the afternoons or the weekends. I mean, it was done right a block away from your office. I mean, and then, you know, you turn and throw the book at me.
Throw the book at you. We need a book that says a better ending.
Mr. Edmondson's head's about to explode, but just, again, the neighbor that I spoke to just earlier this evening from Mill Street said, yeah, he saw them doing it. Saw them doing it.
The sewer lines that you were at the meeting for tonight?
Sewer lines for his building actually go out the back of his building and cross the private property behind him and go out to, it's crazy. The sewer lines in that whole neighborhood are a mess.
Will they be digging, will they be digging up that road where this, where these driveways are going to be on this, for this property? Will they be behind it?
Oh, no, they're going to be digging up, they're going to be putting in new sewer lines on, um, Bill Street. They're going to be putting in new sewer lines on Mill Street and on our lot place. They're redoing the whole-
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
So, this is, this is going to be happening when you're trying to rent out seven apartments if you get approval? You, you understand that, right?
Yeah, um, I will submit my, uh, my photo. I will call my engineer. That's the best I can tell you. I mean, uh, one bedrooms, uh, and I can, I can, I can totally get her concerned as well. Uh, but I can think, I can think a bigger unit is going to be a bigger issue than a small unit.
So, Mr. Chairman, we got basically where we stand right now, the way I see it, correct me if I'm wrong, but we all agree we can't, we can't approve it tonight because we don't have a proper engineered plan and we don't have response from his engineer for all the deficiencies or, or comments. All the responses to all the comments from the town engineer. So, we know we can't move forward with an approval. So, it's just a matter of, do we want to take a vote tonight and stop him? Or do we want to allow him to come back to yet the next meeting in the hopes that he'll be able to come back with all of the engineering to support all of these deficiencies? Responses to all these comments, which I don't see how, but it's really, it's the board's pleasure. We either, we either need a motion to take a vote right now or a motion to table this in another month.
For further information.
For further information, again, which I remind you was exactly what we had, this, we had this list last month. Sorry, but I just, Edmondson is a big fan of not wasting time. I don't want to waste any time either.
All right, what's the board's pleasure?
I don't know, Mr. Ed, Mr. Whichover wanted to put some of that into a motion.
Before a motion is made, I would just throw up for the board that I, I think what I'm hearing is that the applicant is up against, has a steep hill to climb based on the report from Graves Engineering. There are numerous items in here that possibly cannot be solved. And I, I would suggest or recommend that we leave it up to the applicant if he wants to go back and talk to an engineer, spend the money to get responses or to get him, to leave him the option to get information from an engineer that, who might tell him, you're up against a steep, you got a steep hill to climb here, whatever. And for us not to make that decision, but for that decision to be on the applicant and, and his engineer.
And then the applicant resubmit it some later day?
If it's the applicant's choice. I mean, if he goes to his engineer, they talk about it, and the engineer says, look, I can't do anything about all 30 of these. There's only one that I can address. That is an issue that I think Mr. Salinas should be, be allowed to make that choice.
Mr. Chairman?
That would be just my input.
Given the, the gross lack of, of information from his engineer needed to address this special permit application right now, isn't it possible for us to deny this special permit tonight and then have him go and get the engineer to do everything and have him resubmit with all the proper materials? Is there any reason he can't resubmit? We deny it tonight. Is there anything that stops him from?
Well, what's the cost for a special, um, a minor site plan review?
Do you know, he paid to get here?
Yeah, fifteen hundred, I think.
So, he would have to spend another $1,500 to resubmit?
I wouldn't have a problem.
His engineering costs alone are going to be way over there.
I know, I know.
But $1,500 would be well spent if this thing is right. He might not decide to go forward to pay that. That's why, that's what I'm just saying. If, if the decision is made, if the engineer says, I can address these, but it'll cost you this much. And if Mr. Salinas chooses not to make that investment, then we don't have an issue. Then next month, next meeting when we come to talk about it, he can withdraw and go back to the floor.
What's the time?
But it was to be his decision and not necessarily ours.
Special permit to be approved.
That's what I'm asking. I don't know why, I mean, I agree with you, it's a steep hill to climb.
I think Richard's making my point over there.
About?
Was we may be under a timeline.
Yeah.
If we take no action-
I think it's 45 days, isn't it?
Yeah. Does it become a situation where we fail to take action, he can go to the town clerk and get it?
Yeah, approve.
Approve it.
So-
It's like a subdivision.
I'd like to make a motion and we take a vote this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I speak or not?
Motion, motion is made to take a vote this evening.
Right.
It's not deciding what the vote would be. It's just the vote. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. What's, what's everybody's pleasure on voting tonight? Yeah.
And just to be sure, all those in post, all those in favor of approving the special permit?
No, no, we're just, we're going to take a vote on this tonight.
Oh. Oh, we're voting whether we're taking a vote.
Right. I think that was your motion.
Do you know what the deadline is that we have to vote on this?
I think there's 45 days.
Yeah, but like, do you know what the date actually is?
We're already a month into that.
I know, that's why I'm asking what the exact date is. Now, I think we've got to, got to shut this off now.
See, I would, I would end up-
Mr. Chairman, I move the question.
One second. We could ask him if he would be willing to extend that to 90 days, because he, he needs time too.
Mr. Chairman, we could, we could, uh, we could, if he comes back with all the proper material, we could, we could, uh, take a vote to waive the second application of $1,500 if you feel that badly about it.
Or we could just ask him if we, if he's be willing to extend his, his permission and do it for 90 days.
I'd like to vote on the question.
Mr. Chairman, I move the question.
All right. All in favor to vote tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, all against it?
So, my opinion is this, we don't have an application in front of us. He made it pay his $1,500, but where do we see an application? He came in front of us last month with a problem. We had a Graves Engineering report that says, hey, there's a lot of issues here. We said, following the information from Nelson Berlin gang, hey, you need to take these steps to start go-through here. I don't see an application. You guys see an application here in place?
How can you start the special permit process without having an application?
Exactly, my point exactly.
You have last month's paperwork in your folder and it might have been committed by- Guy has it because he wasn't here, so I know he likes to keep all of his paperwork. Wouldn't be in anybody else.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would submit that, application aside, I think one of the things that's been raised this evening is some concerns, uh, I think at least two of us sitting here with regards to the credibility of the applicant and the information that has been provided or what has been proposed as information so far to date. And, uh, it's, I'm not overwhelmed, sir, of what you've put forth so far this evening.
I apologize.
And I, and it just looks like a continuation of what happened last month and to no purpose, frankly.
I, I do apologize, because like I said, I'm, I've never done this before and I, I-
I'm sorry, you mentioned properties that you owned in several other communities, so you've never gone through something like this before?
No, no, never had done it, never done it.
Well, as they say, this is the first time for everything.
I've never done it.
This is it.
Mr. Chairman, the application as submitted, signed by Town Planner Bill Scanlon on July 5th. That's when your clock started.
That is woefully incomplete because one original site plan and 12 copies they're unshowing. I don't know if we have a site plan.
Well, wait a minute. Just a while ago, we were willing to put assumptions together and fill in those blanks.
We don't have a site plan?
Now we're not doing that.
Last month, Dan, we accepted this taped survey and called it a site plan. This, this is what he brought us last month. It's the same thing.
No, no, I got plans. I got, I-
Mr. Chairman, I want to add something right now, okay? I'm getting sick of the antagonism and nastiness from two of my, both board members, okay? I listened to you, I listened to you guys-
Did you just want to shut up?
I listened to you guys rant and rave as much as you want to, okay, and I put up with it. Now, I'm simply making some points and I'm trying to be as calm as possible about it. And every time I open my mouth, I got two people just brumming, just yelling at me pretty much. And I'm getting a little bit sick of it, okay? You want to be rude to the applicant? I don't think that's nice either. You don't want to, you don't believe him? That's fine. There's no reason to be rude to people in here and discourteous just because you think you're superior or something like that. Let's start acting a little bit more normal, a little more brotherly, and start to get our act together here a little bit.
Because I'm getting a little bit sick.
I'm getting a little bit, that's fine.
I don't like to be lied to. Go ahead, shut me down.
This is what I'm talking about. These two clowns can interrupt anybody they want to.
Clown.
But I can't speak at clowns.
Clowns. Now, who's being rude?
Yep, clown.
All right, so if that was the fifth, I'm just trying to, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Are we already past our time?
That was the 5th of July?
Yeah.
Well, that left us with 26th, uh, and, uh-
Would that be calendar days or working days?
I think they're working days, 45 working days.
I got us at 40 days now.
So, Mr. Chairman, in light of the new evidence that we have found that a site, a, um, an application that is incomplete, I would once again follow up to the, the motion that was made earlier. In light of this new information, I would change my vote. So, I think that we should once again have a motion on the, on the floor. If we should hold a vote tonight, I think we should re-vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you were doing the counting. I know that was interrupted, but did you have a number yet?
Not exactly, sorry. So, no vote is automatically approved? Correct?
Yeah.
We're at 28 days right now. And you think it's 45 days that we have to respond? Because our next, our next meeting wouldn't be, our next regularly scheduled meeting, because we voted to, um, to cancel one meeting in July and August. So, we're, we're meeting in, in this meeting tonight at the 14th of August, so the 28th meeting would be canceled. So, that would push our next meeting all the way till September 11th. Now, it's at 28, 29, 30, 35, 40, 45. That would be at 48, 48 days.
So, thus the new information, thus I would recommend, or I'd make a motion for a re-vote.
Okay.
Could we ask him to withdraw the application and resubmit? Without prejudice?
If you, I, I just don't know if you withdraw something without prejudice if you get your money back. I think you do. I mean, like, the, the application for the A and R plan, you had spent $200. You're not going to, we're not doing, we're not moving on it. So, you get a chance to come back. You don't have to respend the $200. We could look at it the same way.
Have we done that before?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then I-
Yeah, that's another option if you would like to withdraw your, if you would like to withdraw this. You, you already know what, what needs to be done. You have a list from our engineer.
Correct.
You've got to go to your engineer and get all those things addressed. And then you could come back. You could withdraw your plan tonight, officially withdraw it. Your, your minor site plan review, we withdraw it and come back at a later date if you have all those things addressed. Or if you have a solution, I mean, you may not be, like Mr. Edmondson was just saying, there's some things in there you may not be able to solve. But if you have, out of 32 or 31 items, if you have 25 of them solved and you come back and say, these are the items that I can't solve and here's the reasons why, we're reasonable. We'll, we'll look at that, but any-
Those are the ones you would ask for waivers on and then we'd take each one up separately.
Individually, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do we still have Mr. Edmondson's motion? Was that a motion, Mr. Edmondson?
It was a motion. It hasn't been seconded yet, but it was a motion.
It's all, we still have, still looking for a second on that.
We had the option of the withdrawal.
As one of the clowns, I will second that motion.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to love opening that box.
Do you want to, do you want to take the, I'm sorry, but I was, I don't even remember what the original motion was for.
We're going to take a vote tonight.
Tonight, yes.
So, there was a motion made to take a vote tonight. It was seconded, we voted. And there was two for, three against. But then we had the new information that we do have an application, that the clock is ticking. And so, based on that new information, my motion was that we reopen and then take a vote on voting tonight. So, basically, second in Steve's.
And you're seconding it.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, all in favor?
Mr. Durgin, your hands are crossed.
Two votes.
All right, Mr. Durgin's on.
It's unanimous?
Yeah. It's unanimous.
Okay. So, are we vote, are we, are we voting to, we're going to vote to act on this tonight?
We are voting to act on this tonight.
Okay, so how do we want to act? Do we want to just straight out deny it and have him come back? Or do we want to ask him to withdraw it and, um, come back at a later date if he, if he feels like he can address the majority of the items on the list?
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Can I have an extension?
Crazy for him not to withdraw it right now, because he, he should see that we're about to deny it if he doesn't withdraw it.
Can I have an extension? And that's possible to address his issues or no? That's not possible.
Your withdrawal is, is your extension. You withdraw it, you come back when you get the answers to the questions from the engineers. And we want the, we want the answers from your engineer, not from your engineer that you've marked up. We need the engineer, we need the engineer to have everything, you know, when he, when he signs and stamps something, he's putting his, his mark on it that he's, he's approved this. You can't change it after the fact.
And by also by doing it this way, if you talk to your engineer and he starts to give you some of the prices of what it's going to cost to properly put this together and you decide, I, I don't want to spend that money in the chance that they still deny it, then you just don't come back and it basically has died because he withdrew it. We don't have to think about voting on it again. Dan loves talking.
If you, if you withdraw it, the amount of money that you're going to get back would be the amount you paid minus the amount that we have to pay Graves for his engineering review. So, I mean, you've already spent that money, because you've got, you've got the rest of it.
And I have a list from Graves Engineering. It makes it easier for, for the items. That's my choice.
So, you, you're willing to withdraw it without prejudice and bring it back when you get the items addressed?
All right. And at that point, I, so I need to submit a new application or, or just come back?
I think you'll have to, you can, yeah, you can copy the application that you have, but there's going to have to be new dates and we'll have to start the clock all over again.
Your acting town planner would have to sign it as opposed to-
You would have to resubmit that.
Resubmit the application.
Yeah, and then once you end up resubmitting it and I don't, yeah, so that's how we would have to go about it.
Okay, and then, um, what about Graves Engineering's fee? I think it was $1,000.
I think that would be subtracted from the 1500.
That's going to be subtracted from the $1,500 that you've already paid.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like, right now, you could, you could leave it as you withdraw your, your application. When you come back for your new application, if you have everything addressed on there from Graves, we still, we, we still have to, whatever your engineer comes up with for solutions for Graves, we have to send that back to Graves and he has to review it again. So, if you don't have enough money in your account, you've given us 1,500 so far, if Graves' second review goes over the 1,500, you'll have to pay for that. So.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, I would like, I would like that, so that's my choice.
So, you're withdrawing it?
Yes, I would like to withdraw it. And then, resubmit.
Yeah, I think you have, unfortunately, I think you have a lot of work to do here to.
I do, and I wasn't unrealized, I thought Berlin engineer wrote the letter saying, and then, like I said, the letter included a map saying that four units, so I just, just took it as that, honestly.
Okay. Thank you, and the next time that we meet is, like I said, it's September 11th. If you can get everything done by then, and you want to get back on the agenda, just let the town planner know before that. Yeah, 9/11.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, next item on our agenda, we have discussion, sorry, regionalization, Central Mass Regional Planning Town Planner question concerning participation. So, I just got to find that memo that I had typed up here. All right, so, as everybody knows, our former interim town planner, Phil Scanlon, has retired, and we're in the search for a new, a new town planner. And. So, I got an email from the town administrator asking us to take a vote, oh, here it is, right here. So, one of the things that was put forward that we could possibly do is possibly look for another town to join with, to have a regional planner that would work for two towns instead of one town. The situation, I guess that's, that's the current situation, I think they said in Blackstone, Millville?
Yeah, Blackstone and Millville, Spencer might be interested.
Right, so Blackstone and Millville have one planner that they currently share, and they said that that seems to be working out very well. Spencer has been looking for a town planner full-time for the better part of a year, from what I understand, and they haven't had any applicants or any applicants to hire, basically. So, they were gonna, Central Mass Regional Planning was going to reach out to Spencer to see if they would be willing to go in to basically partnership with us for a planner, if they could find a planner that would be willing to work for two towns. I mean, I think that's, I don't know if that's more attractive to work for two towns part-time than it is to work for one town, one town full-time, I don't know. But, basically, the items that the town administrator would like to know is, do we want Central Mass Regional Planning to pursue the offer to regionalize the job? And that's one of the things that we need, that we'd like a yes or no vote on. The other thing is that, do we want to be, how much does the planning board want to be involved in the, in the hiring process for the new town planner, or part-time town planner, I guess? So, the situation with the planning board being involved is that if we all want to interview candidates, it has to be done in an open public forum, and it has to be videotaped. And we have to stick to a specific set of questions, we have to ask each individual person, if we have that many, if we have multiple candidates, we have to ask them all the same questions, and we can't vary the questions. If they, if they give us an answer that's not, you know, what we're looking for, we can't really go off and start asking individual questions.
Mr. Chairman, normally, I love taking an opportunity to show you how intelligent I am, superior to all of you, but I will admit that I do not believe that I am qualified to act as a personnel, you know, personnel, a person from Personnel Department to make those kind of. I can't conduct an interview, I guess is what I'm trying to say. See, I can't even speak anymore, I'm so upset.
So, one of the things that I think is possible to avoid this, so we don't have to put candidates on the spot or make them go through a on-camera interview, is if we have a minority member, minority number of the board members, if they wanted, if they wanted to be like interviewing the candidates.
A subcommittee?
A subcommittee.
Like, just have two members, someone don't have a quorum?
Yep, you don't have a quorum.
Avoid that problem.
Yep, and you could go and actually interview the persons, you know, you could do it together or individual, or you could do it with the town administrator, or with Central Mass Regional Planning, you know, it could be a Zoom call where everybody's on at the same time. But it doesn't have to be recorded.
Okay.
Because you don't have a quorum.
That's what they kind of did with me, it was like a panel interview, and there was multiple towns and they had.
I would say, I'm agreeable to that idea, I just would say that I'm not going to be one of the people that feels qualified to be on that panel.
So, could we make a vote tonight? Would somebody like to make a motion that we nominate a subcommittee for the, for the search of a new part-time town planner?
Should we make sure we have at least two members on this board right now that are willing to serve?
Can I back that up just a bit, Chairman, Mr. Chairman? So, we're still focused on this idea of a part-time planner, there's, there's no alternative to that, and part-time is as good as we ever get?
That's, well, from what I understand, Spencer had their full-time position open at a salary of $80,000 per year with benefits, and they don't have any applicants, so.
Oh, but we're Dudley.
Yeah, I don't think we want, I don't think we're going to be able to beat that salary, so I don't think we can go to full-time.
The other thing, it seems a little awkward, is we're talking about this position, and we had Joseph here, and we're almost saying she's not really here anymore. We put you out in the cold somewhere.
Our contract with Central Mass Regional Planning for her services is basically written until Labor Day, or the end of September.
Wow, short-term agreement.
Do you happen to know what the pros and cons are of regionalization? They're asking us to do regionalization, I, I have no idea what.
Can I chime in?
Yeah.
I think it's worked great, there is a, we call it the Jack Dillon Duo, and they're doing, I think, Mendon, Oxbridge, and another Mtown, Millville, maybe? Yeah, and they are tremendous, it's an assistant planner and a town planner, and they just work effortlessly, and I think the expertise is just great on it.
Two people covering three towns?
Two people with three towns, and it's amazing, and we've worked through grants together, we're just working through, like, we've done the master plans together, we've done a housing production plan, and it's amazing. Like, I personally think it's working great in those three towns, and that's what we were trying to go for with CMRPC, to see if there is a regionalization aspect of it. Because a lot of these towns, and specifically because my role is a regional housing coordinator, and I see that a lot of the towns have parallels to each other, and they have issues that they're dealing with that are so similar. So, when that regionalization helps, it just really, like, kind of has like, so to speak, a kumbaya moment, as I put it, which is, yeah.
Let me ask you a question, though, let's take a, for example, let's say that, say Complete Streets, okay? And we want to put together a proposal to go for a Complete Streets grant, and we are competing against other towns. And what if you've got a situation where this regionalized town planner is also the regionalized town planner for Spencer, and they happen to be going for Complete Streets money at the same time, so you've got this.
You're going to get the same application to the, to the people that are giving out the grant money, and whether they choose to give it to Dudley or Spencer is up to them, it's not up to the planner who just puts in the application.
Yeah, and I think the different towns would have different characteristics, I mean, there's different.
So, so they, they're actually autonomous, they.
Yeah, well, at least for me, when I end up putting a grant application in, I cater it to the town. Mendon is very different than me putting a grant application in for, for example, Princeton. The needs and everything else, I mean, I personally work one-on-one with the town admin or the planner, and I sit down and I do the application with them.
So, the regional planner is not beholden to any one town?
No, it's like.
As like an anchor town?
It's like, for example, I mean, this is what I think would happen, it's like, okay, like, right now, I'm working two days here, and then, let's say I work two days in Spencer as an example, and then, let's say I do one day and alternate that, or whatever, how it goes, and just distribute my hours. So, if it's, let's say, 37 and a half hours, you could divide it by three or four and go that way.
What if you have one of those towns that has like a major project going on, it needs more, like, in our case, the master plan, right, and you need more hours?
I think then you would have to work that out and maybe put some overtime in, or I don't really know how that would go specifically with that, but that's something.
But then again, Richard, we have nobody.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not saying you're nobody.
No, 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 I'm just giving that as an example.
We don't have anybody that can really give the amount of time that's involved in a master plan now anyway, so.
I mean, like, I think, I think the, the question that you brought up, like, on the Complete Streets, the way I see that is like, you know, the Complete Streets Committee would look at the applications from both Dudley and Spencer and say, like, okay, Dudley has a larger need for sidewalks than Spencer does, so we're going to give, we're going to give this round of money to Dudley because they have a larger need. You know, so I don't think it would get that, I don't think we would be that bogged down with the, with the planner part of it, because I think it's going to go back to the, whoever you're making the application to.
The guideline of the application.
Yeah, they're going to look at, they're going to look at the two towns on an individual basis.
Whether or not you're meeting those criterias for that specific grant.
Right, I mean, we're not going to have all the answers for this tonight. I mean, basically, what we got to vote on tonight is, would we like to create a subcommittee to interview planner candidates of this board? And it can be one member, it can be two members, it just can't be three members, because that's a quorum.
Yeah.
The other vote we need is, do we want to pursue, have Central Mass Regional Planning pursue the, the offer of helping find us a regional planner with another town? Because they're willing to do that for us.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, first issue in regards to the subcommittee. All right, so that subcommittee would be some number of us?
One or two.
One or two. With who else?
Some members from Central Mass Regional Planning, they would be help, happy to help, you know, screen the candidates, and also, like, the town administrator and the assistant town administrator.
All right, and the majority vote would be whatever happens today.
Okay, all right, somebody want to make a motion?
I will move that we go forward with the formation of a subcommittee to work with the CMRPC representative, and I think our human resource representative from the town of Dudley, and hopefully, look at this, this survey landscape as far as candidates are concerned.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, okay.
And the second one was to pursue the idea of a.
Well, hold on, we just, we just, we just voted to make a subcommittee. Let's see who's interested in being on the subcommittee. So, do we have any volunteers?
Oh, I thought we didn't have to decide that. I thought you said that.
No hot seat today.
I don't think we're going to, we're going to solve all the answers on a regionalized planner tonight.
Oh.
Yeah.
But, I mean, like, we do, we do have to put somebody forward who's willing to go onto the subcommittee.
Okay, oh, I, well.
You've already said that you, you didn't think you were qualified. I'm going to bow out because I don't have the time.
I'm kind of just saying, well, I don't really have the time either, for it.
Okay, so that leaves the two gentlemen on the ends, would they be interested in being, being our subcommittee?
I think it'd be great, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Durgan and Mr. Clark.
All right.
Okay, so we have our subcommittee, do we need, let's, somebody want to make, I'll make a nomination that we have Mr. Durgan and Mr. Clark for our subcommittee?
I'll second that nomination.
We have a second by Mr. Wetroba, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, that's our subcommittee. And now, to go on to the regionalization of the position, so that we would share a planner with another town.
I reluctantly make a motion that we ask the town administrator to move forward with.
It's going to be, it's going to be Central Mass Regional Planning.
Oh, Central Mass Regional Planning, to move forward with regionalization of our town plan.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor for a regionalized planner? We have.
I'm going to be against that one.
Okay, we have four yes and one, one nay.
Dan is a nay.
You want to share why? You think a regionalized planner would be bad, or?
I'm not saying it would be bad, I would like to see a planner dedicated to Dudley, I realize that it would probably be a part-time position, and it might be difficult to fill, but I will at least like to try to pursue that avenue first, to see if it's possible.
I mean, I agree, but my thinking was, can't we undo this? I mean, at some point, could we, if the town group continued to grow, and we found that, boy, we really do need a full-time planner of our own, why couldn't we leave the regional?
I, I, yeah.
So, I'm just saying, for now, I begrudgingly go along with the regionalization, because we've got.
Say it again?
I assume it would go by like contract, like, let's say you can do like a six-month or a year contract, and let's say, in a year, you're like, okay, we've grown so much that we can afford a full-time town planner, and this is what it is, definitely, I think that's how, I'm assuming it would go.
The current situation, I think, is with the budget, it's like, Bill, the budget for Bill, I think, was around $45,000 a year, and we didn't pay benefits.
Right.
So, I mean, like, trying to get a new person to come in and fill his shoes for that kind of money.
I think we sometimes forget how fortunate we are that he stayed as long as he did.
Right, so I think, I think we're going to, I think our only choice for right now would be to do the regionalized one, because, you know, unless you get another candidate that's a, that's a former planner who's retired and just wants to keep himself busy 20 hours a week or 15 hours a week. But, I mean, like, Bill was 15 hours a week, and now we're going to have a master, we, there's a possibility we may be looking at doing a master plan next year, and if that comes to, comes through, then we would probably need a town planner 20 hours a week. So, we would have to probably ask for an increase in hours for just that.
Mr. Chairman, Bill was involved in a lot more than the meetings that we. He was very much involved with the economic development plan, for example, the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
He did a lot, yeah.
There were a variety of things.
The whole thing, and the whole revitalization of Mill Street and all of that.
Yeah, and, you know, in terms of the sharing of someone, that can get pretty rough, because those meetings were at various times, the economic development is in the mornings, I believe that they were meeting weekday mornings. You know, if this guy's going to be in Spencer at that time, who here, who's there? You know, and then you've got our meetings in the evening, Open Space and Recreation was evenings as well.
But you have no choice.
I know, we're, we're the rock and hard place, there is no option. But, it's just that Bill covered a lot of the landscaping, somebody is, hopefully, gets some points as far as free gas, and they can move around pretty quickly. And I, I know, I know we don't want to involve any humor in this, but that's.
I think we have to see how it goes, but.
Yes, we have.
You're only contracted until Labor Day.
Labor Day.
So, you're not even going to be here for our next meeting, then?
We can talk about that later.
Yeah. There was an option for an extension.
We can talk about that later.
She's going to be already trained, so it'll be very easy for her to extend it, so. Okay. This, this document that you gave me earlier today?
Yes, yes. So, that is.
Is this on our agenda?
Um, that is St. Anthony's.
Right.
I think that was just going to be.
Not on the agenda.
Not, that's not on the agenda, I think that was just mentioned for you, because we would talk about it later in the next agenda, but we wanted you to take a look at it, because, just to see what's like the process on it.
So, this is St. Anthony's Street, I don't know if anybody knows where this is, it's off of Rainy Street, up off of 31. And it looks like this is an as-built, it's an acceptance plan for the town of Dudley, so they want to get this road accepted, and I think they want to get it accepted at a, at a town meeting. And so, this has already been, this has already been submitted and reviewed by Graves. Signed off by Jeff Walsh, from what I'm seeing here. So, I think we have to, I think we have to hold a public hearing on this.
We have to hold a public hearing, but again, I just wanted to know, like, the whole process behind it, so.
When was that built?
A long time ago. The last house to be built on it was probably back in, I'm going to guess, 2005, 2006, I'm trying to figure it out.
And its current condition is such that it.
I don't know, it's a very short road.
Okay.
It's a dead end, it's like four houses on one side, and what did you say?
Three on the other.
Three on the other, yeah.
But Graves already went out with that?
Apparently, it's, it's, it's here. Yeah, well, I can, it came from the town administrator, so I can, actually, the new chairman can touch base with the town administrator and find out what's going on with St. Anthony's Road.
So, I think I'll dig right up there, actually.
Yeah.
I don't know if I've ever been down that road.
It's, it's a dead-end road at the end of Rainy Street.
Do you want me to get this to you?
Do we want to go forward with publishing, with a public hearing on this, or do we want to wait until?
Let's, let's find out what, you know, if they're planning on doing this at the Fall Town Meeting, that would be in October.
Yeah.
So, we need to have a meeting two, two weeks, we have to have it published in the newspaper two weeks in advance, and then have the meeting.
It's going to be right up against the wire.
Yeah, so we have to find out.
If you had a continuation of the public hearing.
Who's paying for that application?
It would be the, it would be the, the landowners or the owners of the property on the street.
I mean, who paid Graves for what he did so far?
Would have been them.
I didn't even know that there was anything going on with this, this is just.
Bill, I mentioned it at one of, one of the meetings months ago.
You did?
I heard him say something about it, yeah.
Something about it.
That it would be coming before us, because I guess that the, the homeowners must. That it would be coming before us, because I guess that the, that the homeowners must have been-
I, I remember that now, for some reason, I had it in my head that he was talking about something having to do with the development out by you, Richard, because that's St. Anthony's Church, as I thought he was talking about.
This is St. Anthony's Street, so-
Gotcha, St. Anthony's Street, all right. Now I see my confusion.
There was another thing, I thought, okay. All right, so, I, I don't think we'll have anything, so we go, we'll go through the standard business discussion, status report on finishing construction of acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, so I guess we could add St. Anthony's on to this list, but we've got Hereupon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farms Estates, Lyons Estates, and Sophie's Way.
Mr. Chairman, I think at the previous meeting, and I forget which one it might have been, I had asked that, under standard business, we include a, a line item or agenda item of master plan. It might be premature at this point, because we're still kind of searching for a planner, so-called.
We don't have the grant yet, either.
Well, we don't have the grant yet, either, but at some point, I think we should make that addition in, uh, yes, that's another point, like, September, I told, for the grant, as far as that goes, so, that's pertinent, thank you.
Yeah, I think once the grant's there, we can definitely add that in, no problem.
Then, um, so you, you, you've received nothing since you've been here on any of those subdivisions that have come in?
No.
Okay. Um, inspections and actions associated with site plan, plans, Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, SCP Solar, Oxford Avenue, JD and D twenty-four, Oxford Avenue, Stevens Mill, Solar Project at the landfill, Dudley Housing Authority. So, there was an email, I don't know if we, if you had a chance to get it into our, our binder?
Yeah, I think it's email thread with, with David?
Yes, it's in here, okay, so there was an email that Graves Engineering went out and looked at the landfill project, and that the runoff and, uh, I guess detention basin is, um, still acceptable, in Graves' opinion, so.
But Graves also said that there was no, no groundwork being done, and they dug out that trench in the middle, so I don't think Graves has all the information he needs.
I'm just assuming that he says he went out there and looked at it, that he went out and looked at it, I, I don't know.
I say table until next week, and then our next meeting, and we'll talk about it then, because I, I want to talk to Graves about this, find out.
Okay.
Because there was twice in that meeting when they came here, that they said there wasn't, wasn't going to be any site work at all, when they dug a, a three-foot trench.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's out of order, but Eisenhower Drive, we were still waiting for some money, or some tally, in terms of what Graves, that seems to just kind of be hanging forever. Are we even closer?
We did, we did vote to, um, use the money that was left in the escrow account to, to do the rest of the sewer work, there was a pump or something that needed to be adjusted, and we did vote for that money to go to that, but we also said that we were going to invite all the residents of Eisenhower to come to a meeting, so we could explain the Betterment program to them.
I think it was our understanding that that money that was in escrow was not sufficient to cover the cost, and that's why we would have to go forward with Betterment, but I, I don't know that we ever got to what the number would be. I mean, when these people come in, I think that's the first question they're going to ask, is how much you want or how much you need.
Right, so we need to have-
Graves, I thought I'd done that, or was doing that.
Or we need to have somebody give an estimate of what's, what's left to be done.
Right.
Right.
Did we have that for Tobin Farms, though, when they came in? I thought in Tobin Farms, we kind of, we, we didn't have the number, we just laid out to them, you know?
Well, you have to, yeah, you have to ask, that goes before town meeting, they have to vote all the residents of the, of the street.
No, I mean, I, I understand when we get to that point, you have to have the number, but I mean, as far as the informational meeting that we-
You have to, you, you have to have a, a vote of the, of the people of the subdivision just to go get the number.
Well, okay.
The way I understand-
Another thing I think we might want to consider, too, is I know we're very focused on this pump issue, but this subdivision is of some age now, there've been a number of years have gone by, uh, there may be other things that are concerning before, you know, could be accepted.
I think Bill had asked Jeff Murray before he left to go out and look at it, but I don't ever remember seeing the report back from him.
No, I don't think he did.
So, we would have to ask the new town highway superintendent to go out and take a look and see if there's anything outstanding that he can see just by driving by.
Get the whole package.
Right, so we have an idea of what, what, what they're up, up against, you know?
Yeah.
If he thinks the road's in good shape and it's just a sewer issue, then that's all we need, yeah.
Tobin Farms would have died on the vine there, too.
Right, because they never got the, they never got the bids out.
Well, no, the problem with Tobin Farms, from, last thing I heard about Tobin Farms was that now somebody from, somebody from Tobin Farms, which the difficulty is, not get the developer, has to move forward with conservation, I guess, something, it was something to do with conservation, I remember what, Bill was explaining it to me, but I don't remember what it was, and, so the problem is, I guess we're going to try and find out if they still have one person that lives in Tobin Farms that is acting as the, the spokesperson, for lack of a better term, for the whole group?
Okay.
So, I guess that's another thing the next chairman-
Is that us, for, for us to handle, or is that for, because it already went to town meeting, I voted on-
I think I got to talk to the town administrator about this, then, right?
Yeah.
And, uh-
Because I think that's past us now.
Right, and I, I just wasn't doing it, because-
Well, now you're chairman, you can do it.
That's right, so I'll do that.
Okay.
That'll be one of my little, that project. Does anybody know what's going on with JD and D twenty-four Oxford Ave?
It's for sale, isn't it?
Yeah, but, but things like, it's done, what's left to be done there? I don't understand why that's still on our list.
So, that should be ruled?
Well, no, if it's still not approved.
I mean, there's probably still money in the escrow account, we, I, I don't, I don't know if our engineers been out to do the final checkup, checkoff?
That, that's, I, I guess that's what I'm asking, should we, should we inquire as to-
I thought they asked for an extension not too long ago.
I remember something about electrical, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I think that's been resolved, so.
Could we ask?
I wonder if the building inspector, he, he can't, uh, well, it's not really an occupancy permit either, right, because it's not a, it's not a dwelling.
Oh, you need, you need a certificate of completion.
Certificate of completion?
Yeah.
Right, so, there's no way that there could be a certificate of completion on that building, right?
You can find out.
I mean, you can't get a certificate of completion if we haven't-
If the engineers-
-had our engineers sign up on it.
Yeah, I would think he would want that.
Right.
Can you get ahold of the owner of that JD and D?
Yep.
And see if, if they're, because I do, I do believe Mr. Clark is right, I think the, the place is for sale.
Let's ask them if they're ready for their final inspection from the, from the town engineer, that's what we want, right?
Yeah.
Right, and if not, why?
And if they would like an extension, be, be on what they got, because I don't know what, when they're-
Because I don't know about you, Mr. Chairman, but I would hate to see somebody buy that property and then come before us.
With a bunch of waivers.
Yeah, got it.
I bought this and I have all these problems. Okay, next thing on our li, agenda is Planner's Plate, this is where Bill would have comments.
Ah, go for it. Um, the Affordable Housing Bond Bill has passed.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can send over, I guess, a little link to it, um, if you all want to read on it. Uh, besides that, um, we are, CMRPC, just putting this as an announcement for Affordable Housing, um, Bond Bill, we're doing a, um, I guess, like, a Q and A with CHAFA, which is the citizens, hold on, I, whatever, Citizen Housing Planning, um, what's it called, like, the organization, so we're going to have a speaker come in and they're going to talk about the Affordable Housing Bond Bill, so that's pretty much what I have on the agenda for Planner's Plate.
Next, number four, comments from the planning board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I am in receipt of the, the monthly, the newsletter, the most recent newsletter from CMRPC, I will send copies to members here. Um, just reflecting a bit in terms of earlier on this evening, I know emotions ran ri, ran wild, uh, I do think a comment made by a member was somewhat out of order, uh, and, uh, I think it might have been the heat of the moment, and I will excuse it with that thought in mind.
Mr. Emerson?
Two things, first of all, we were going through the reorganization of the board, and we usually tried to identify an alternate planning board member.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that we want to still try to pursue?
Didn't we have Bill LePage indicate some interest of coming back?
I believe, he, he, he did express an interest in that, but what happened since then was that somebody from Conservation tapped him for a seat on Conservation, and I think he still was thinking of going to zoning, so I don't, I don't know.
Why don't we just ask our former member, Mr. Shinaki, if he would be interested?
He said he's missing us?
Sure he would.
[laughing]
I'm missing you, Steve, so we can, we can, uh, would you, would you mind asking him, Dave?
Oh, ask him, I'm sure.
We got room on this side of the table.
What is it, just we have to make a vote? So, basically, anytime one of us would have to-
I know it is, but do we vote to, to do it, or is it, that's a select?[1562.81]